And we need to balance our capital needs with our operational demands. And we need to do this with an eye or a framework or a lens of trying to maintain a stable property tax rate increase year over year. So how we're doing that is we took, we decided to take some steps and we decided to take some steps to recognize the needs of our various, of the various requests and we want to organize ourselves. The mayor and the president formed an ad hoc committee to study the issue. A group of aldermen along with members of the administration met over the last few months to develop an advisory plan. We took input from various departments. We did a bunch of research. The schools participated in that effort along with all the other major departments here in the city. And we took their input and we tried best we could to formulate a plan based off of their priorities. And again, we want to make sure we're doing it with a lens of trying to maintain a stable tax rate year over year. And so one thing kind of want to note, just so folks are aware, over the last eight or so years from 2016, we've had about 73% of schools spending on capital request or bond authorizations. And on the non-school side, what I'll refer to as general government, we had about $66 million or about 27%. So we have 73% schools, 27% general government for our capital bond authorization requests. That would be our direct debt service budget over the last eight years or so. And so we, we took this opportunity to develop a plan and a targeted debt list for spending over the next five years based off of some conservative assumptions and in a framework with an eye towards trying to maintain a debt service that was in and around $30 million over the next five years. As I note, we're at $21 million now. And to do that, we needed to understand and recognize our obligations and essentially that meant predicated on some assumptions that we forecasted that we could safely bond or authorize debt of about $150 million over a five-year period, approximately $30 million year over year. And so we started to identify the capital improvements necessary to create a planning tool to assist us in future years that would not be debt service related. And so again, remember, we have two avenues of paying for debt, paying for capital improvement projects. One is our debt, the other is our, is our cash option, which is our capital improvements budget. So through the exercise that we undertook over the last few months, some policy guidance was also arrived at where we are making some recommendations to the board of aldermen on how best to handle capital improvements and debt service requests as they come up in the, come up in the future. And so again, as a community, we need to, we need to work together to manage our debt service budget and to develop a framework where our capital expenditure spending can be in harmony with, with, with one another. And I included in here, and I'll see if I can rotate this so folks can, can actually just see it on the, on the, on the page here. But it is essentially the, the communication that the mayor and the president, President Willsshire put together back on February 2nd to talk about this ad hoc joint committee to provide some recommendations on our debt service planning relative to anticipated capital spend expenditures over the next five years. And so again, I'm leaving you with this communication so you kind of have it and you can see how, how it came together. And then this is a really important document that I think will help frame the conversation here. And let's see if I can get to it. So what you see here is a matrix that shows the general fund bond information debt service plan predicated off of this spring. And basically what it shows here is over a 20-year, 4% interest rate. These are, you know, assumptions that we're making and, you know, basically we're, we're trying to, you know, create a matrix or a framework that we can use to help our, guide our decision-making. We already know we're at about $21 million of debt service spending as of right now. What can we reasonably increase over the next five years or so? And you can see we very, very quickly get to $30 million of debt service predicated on $30 million of new capital bond authorizations. And so with this work that we did, we developed, this is by way of background, just the bonding plan as prior to our work that kind of just shows what, what was already approved. I think there was essentially two school projects already approved along with a streetscaping project. And really focusing down here where we're trying to develop a $30 million target year over year or $150 million in, in spending. And these were the various priorities presented to us by the various departments that we worked on over the last few months based off of the information of, you know, the, the departments, the employer boards and the board of aldermen and the mayor. We used it as the genesis to develop this document right here, which was ultimately the recommendation made by the ad hoc committee that is going before the board of aldermen where this is advisory, an advisory only to the board of aldermen. And ultimately it should be a living document that gets reviewed annually because things change, but based off of a snapshot of how we see things right now. And one of the big things that I want to note is the, the ad hoc committee to get to this point felt pretty strongly that we should only be borrowing about $125 million over the next five years, not that $150 million that I originally referenced. With the thought process being is we want to be a little conservative here in case emergencies arise or whatever the case may be. We should not go up to the full target amount that was recommended by CFO Griffin and, and myself when we first, when we first started this, this exercise. And so based off of the various priorities that were outlined by the various stakeholders and department heads, we developed a five-year schedule for the debt service maintaining $125 million spend over the next five years. And it shows it broken out like this. And what I'll note here is this is the, the debt service plan. So these would be projects that would require bonding. You have other projects that were presented that would, we would recommend that you use cash and your capital improvements budget to, to pay for that. So I'm going to just quickly switch gears right here and go to the exact Excel spreadsheet that this PDF actually was because it goes into a little more detail about how we arrived at our decision-making. And as you can see below the line here, there was already authorization for $34 million factored into the $125 million that was school-related bonding. So that's something just to kind of note, which is something to, to, to keep in the back of your mind. Another was the ad hoc committee felt comfortable that approximately $9 million over this five years is what should be set aside for deferred capital maintenance or cash capital improvement spending for, for the schools. And this is all subject to further conversation. This was really just a jumping off point to help organize us. We need to have further conversations about the capital improvement budget. But nonetheless, trying to balance everything here, I believe the request that was put before us by Mr. Smith and, and the school administration actually asked for something like $15 million over the five years. So it's a little shy of that request, but it's, it's something to start, it's, it's a jumping off point for us to start to work toward. And I say that because this needs to be balanced with a lot of other requests that I'm about to get to. One of them is our paving program that we need to have some money set aside for to continue paving the roads. And then the other one here, and I'm going to switch to it, is the, the, what we call the capital expenditure, non-debt service type of projects that we have coming up on the horizon that we know have been outlined as priorities. And one of the things to note is, as I mentioned earlier, we developed some new guidance. And so with that being said, we, CFO Griffin and myself, and I think the ad hoc committee believes this as well at this point is we don't think any borrowing of, for projects under 1.5 million makes sense. So to even be eligible for general obligation debt service, the project needs to be over 1.5 million. And so that's a, that's a recommendation that, that we're making moving forward. This excludes certain specific capital type equipment or vehicle purchases that may need to occur, but we're talking about just, you know, your typical deferred capital maintenance projects to maintain your buildings and grounds or assets here in the city that are customary. And, and if they don't rise to the 1.5 million level, then we're thinking it would be more appropriate to categorize it, you know, using our capital improvements budget, which is, which is cash, not, not bonding and paying an interest payment. And so the other thing to note is we are suggesting to increase the capital improvements budget over the next few years. Currently, we, we spend approximately a million dollars in our capital improvements budget year over year. We, we are thinking it's probably more appropriate for that to go up to, to something like three and a half million or grow it to, to something like 10 million over a few-year period. And that's going to take time to do. We certainly shouldn't try to do that all at once. We should layer in these increases over, over time as we can accommodate it based off of other budgetary pressures in our, in our operational budget. Again, wanting to maintain that stable tax rate for every two and a half million dollars we add to the operational budget is approximately 1% tax, 1% on the, on the property tax. So keep that in the back of your mind as we're, as we're moving forward here. And so as you can see, this is again, conversation that still needs to be further vetted, but we took a lot of the projects that wouldn't rise to the level of debt service and we programmed them in over the next five or so years to try to accommodate everyone as best we could and try to develop the semblance of a plan that can help guide our decision-making as, as time goes on. And again, I want to emphasize that this is advisory only and should be looked at as a living document that should change and we should have an obligation to review this at least annually to, to ensure we're, we're moving in the, in the right direction. And I say that because there's a, a good amount of assumptions and good, really good best guesses made to help develop this plan. And we should be verifying some of those assumptions as, as, as the years go on to ensure that we stay on target. And so as the night goes on, we may get a little bit more into detail on some of that and we can either Director Sullivan or Treasurer Collector Enright and I can kind of get into the specifics of that. But I want to keep this overview a little, a little high level at this, at this point in time. So I'm going to stop my comments there. I wanted to give everyone a quick overview and review of the work that we've done over the last few months. And Madam Chair, I'm not sure if you want us to continue on with Director Sullivan's comments or if you want to stop right now because this is really the financial portion of the, of the conversation. Director Sullivan's going to talk a little bit more about what he sees for future development on the horizon.
Yeah, I think I'm seeing some hands pop up in regards to, to the information that you just shared. I want to thank you guys for putting together all of this. I know you guys put in a great amount of work coming up with, with these numbers. I really appreciate when we were able to go in and share our needs. You guys listened to us and I feel like this was a really great process that you guys did as a city and I'm just, I'm grateful that you're here sharing it with us. I see Ms. Darling's hand up, so I will hand the floor to her for a sec.
First, I want to say thank you guys very much. I literally was just saying two days ago in the policy committee meeting that I don't know what bonding is. So when I am listening to other committees, I'm regularly half-lost. So I really appreciate that. A moment ago, you said that we're looking to keep the stable property tax. In the beginning, you said stable property tax increase year after year. Which is it?
Well, so stable property tax increase year over year is, is essentially, you know, anywhere what I, what we've used internally as a guiding principle is anywhere between 3% to 4%, 4.5% depending on the year, but that's a stable, what is in, within the industry considered a stable property tax increase year over year.
Any other homeowners? I'm not a homeowner, obviously, but any homeowners gasping at that because that sounds scary to me personally, but like I said, I'm not a homeowner. But we can address that another time.
Any other questions? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. And thank you. I really appreciate, I actually think that the ad hoc committee was a great idea and I really appreciate all the work and that you're coming here to share it with us. My question is on, I have a couple of things where I just couldn't catch it because while you were talking to write it down. So you said that this plan proposal includes $34 million in, that was already earmarked for school-related bonding. Can you tell us exactly what projects those are? Not in great detail, but just like, it's the, it's the security vestibules, right? And then?
Yeah.
It's the Birch Hill in Maine Dunstable.
And Birch Hill in Maine.
And then the middle school contingency.
Okay.
I can actually tell you, hi, Dawn Enright, Treasurer Tax Collector.
Thank you so much.
Resolution 22066, building renovations at the Birch Hill in Maine Dunstable Elementary School. Then we have Resolution 23098, additional costs associated with design and construction of the middle school and renovation expenditure of Penachuk Middle School. That's about $6 million. We, we have been told that there is going to be some savings that we will be able to capture in that project, which was nice to hear. And then the last one here is Resolution 24005, additional costs for the building renovations of Birch Hill in Maine Dunstable Elementary School to the tune of 8.5 million.
Does that include the security vestibule project that has started over at Dr. Crisp as well or no?
There has been discussion about repurposing some funds that have already been bonded to-
Right, because this project is under budget and Penachuk is under budget.
Correct, correct. So there will be discussions of repurposing funds for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
And so I want to clarify, so just, so that means that money has already been, if you will, allocated or made available and wouldn't be considered part of a $30 million individual year type of request because it was already done?
Right, because it's not new money.
It's not new, it's not a new authorization, correct.
Okay. And then my second question is, are you going to go over what's on the list for the next five years? Because I'm old now and I can't read it.
Sure, I'd be happy to if you'd, I'll, I'll take two minutes just to quickly go through right here. I'll try to, I won't, I won't get into the numbers per se, but I'll just quickly, you know, outline what we have on the list. And again, these are approved projects. We have the Walnut Street and West Pearl Street Streetscaping Project already identified. We have a schools elementary, Birch Hill and Maine Dunstable. We have a school, middle school contingency and we have the schools elementary school Birch in, in Maine Dunstable, which is, I believe, what was just referenced a second ago. So then we have imminent on the horizon. We know we have the, none of these have been authorized to date, but the theory would be is we know that these are coming down the, the pike in, in short order. This would be Nine Riverside Police Training Building. We have the parking garages in the city, both the High and Elm Street parking garages that need to be renovated. We have a brand-new pedestrian bridge to connect Little Florida neighborhood over to Mine Falls Park. We have a library project, which would be the masonry and window repairs. We have our hydro dams that need improvement. And then we know that the already approved project for Walnut Street and, and West Pearl needs additional funding as it, as it, as it is today. And then we have some additional capital projects. We have a city hall in need of an HVAC overhaul. We have a DPW garage project. We have a deferred capital maintenance of fire with an Amherst Street floor and a Conan Station roof. We have Holman Stadium with a whole bunch of various renovation-type projects, but mainly field lighting and HVAC improvements. And then Main Street renovation or infrastructure improvement of what we're setting aside is a, is 20% match of what we believe to be a $30 million project in, in today's dollars. So essentially six, $6 million. And then some people may not know, but we actually own the senior center building and we have a responsibility to maintain that building. This, this has been pushed out. It's not something that's going to be part of the five-year schedule, but I want to just note, we originally included it because we know at some point we're going to have an obligation to improve the senior center, particularly their, their roof. And, and that was something that was identified. So these are the various projects that have been prioritized and essentially make up that just over $125 million in, in need over the next, next five years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? See, oh, Ms. Lambfear?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask this and I just wanted to make sure that I was able to say it. Since the, since so much of the city debt is concerned with the school system, I was kind of surprised that there was nobody from the school board on the ad hoc committee. So I don't know how that decision was made or if it's something that we could maybe address in the future. But anyway, I just wanted to point that out and if you have an answer.
Yeah, sure, happy to. Police weren't part of it. Fire was not part of it. Library was not part of it. So, so, and I say that because it was very focused with just the administration, professional staff, and then the members of the board of aldermen. Because the one message I hope you take away tonight is we're one community and we are a community with one debt service budget and we all have priorities and we all have needs and all of these projects are worthwhile. And we want to make sure that we're doing the best we can to be objective. I'll be the first to tell you that I do not have a priority project. What I have is an obligation to try to help this community stay to the $125 million target goal. And so however you want to get there, my job is to help you. But if we all agree that we want to keep a, a stable tax rate and we all agree that we want our debt service budget not to increase exponentially because you have other pressures on your operational budget, then we need to recognize that we can only increase the debt service budget by a certain amount year over year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So to follow that up, thank you so very much for all the extra work that you put in to create this for us to-
Do you want to just move the mic to your, closer to you?
I guess, um-
Speak into, speak into.
You had mentioned to, you had mentioned that we could work together to figure out what to do. So we have 19 schools, right? We have worked on five or six of them. We have one brand-new one. We have a couple that have had extensive work. But most of the schools, most of the 19 that I, that we haven't talked about tonight, haven't had work in 20 to 30 years. So as a city, as a school board, how are we going to deal with that? Because we have a responsibility to the students and to this city of Nashua, right? So I'm so thankful that you put this together. I just want to know when will it be able to be worked on to the other schools? We've mentioned work needing to be done in the high school. We all know that Mount Pleasant needs something done, including a security vestibule. We, we know that these things need to be done and we want to stay according to budget. So how do we get these things done? I think that that's why we're all here today. How do we get those things done too?
Great question. May I, Madam Chair? Thank you. So what I would say is the best thing we could do is to develop a guideline or a matrix, a framework, if you will, of a percentage of what is reasonable for the capital improvements budget to be set aside for school projects. And so as an example, I'm, I'm going to just kind of roughly talk here and everything is, what I'm about to say is, is non-binding, is just kind of illustrative. But to date, our capital improvement budget spending has been about a million dollars. I think we recognize we need to increase that and so we're suggesting that. And so one of the things we're recommending is that that year-over-year increase occur and so we grow it to two and a half, three and a half, four and a half, five and a half, six and a half, to $10 million at some point over the next five, six, seven, eight years, whatever, whatever is appropriate for this community to get there. But let's just keep the numbers simple and we'll say $10 million for this conversation. And so how much of that $10 million should be set aside as a percentage to the schools? And so maybe that's $3 million or roughly a third of that budget. And then you can maintain your 19 facilities as you see fit because again, it's not really us to say what projects you do or don't do, but what we should say is as a community, we agree that this is the budget we have and based on the budget that we have, here's the percentage that we can accommodate. If you'll note, right now, the current debt service plan talks about spending and dedicates approximately a third of the spending over the next five years to schools. That's just a rough guideline. You know, the policy conversation where the board of education and the members of the board of aldermen and the mayor need to come together and say, we agree, over the next five years, we're going to spend X amount, a percent, and we're going to try to work towards that over the next few years. And so there's a recognition that this is what we have to work with. And then that helps inform your staff and, and the professionals day in and day out who have to then implement. And they can develop the projects with a better understanding as to what to do to be consistent and it helps them plan more effectively. And so ultimately what I hope comes out of this conversation today is the start of that conversation.
Do you mind if I just run some quick numbers past you? So one of the things that you stated was that there's 34 already set aside that we've already spent out of this 125. So if we split up the 125 into the three that you just said, that leaves the schools with $41 million, but minus the 34 that we've already spent. So there's $18 million left over over the next five years that could be allocated towards school projects. Am I getting those numbers right?
I, I think it's a quarter. I think it's a quarter is, not a third, but a quarter.
Of the 125?
Of the 125.
So even, okay, so that's 30, 30-ish.
And it's, and it's a third or-
So we're already $4 million over the allocated one-quarter of the 125.
But that's if you all agree that approximately 25% is the percentage. And that's a bigger conversation than schools. I mean, there is a lot of needs, there's a lot of priorities. The fire department in particular has a lot of assets that need to be maintained as well. And we need to recognize that and plan accordingly. And so if, if we could develop a rough guideline of what that percentage looks like, that will help us kind of fill in the, the details.
Yeah. Oh, Alderman Dowd?
I just want to direct some, I've been involved with-
Can, are there any? Do you want to come sit up here in Mr. Claffey's seat? You're not Mr. Claffey, we recognize that.
That's not, stick down.
And I, I'm inviting Alderman Dowd up here because he has been integral in- And I'm inviting Alderman Dowd up here because he has been integral in the JSSBC and knows the ins and outs of all of this, so this is not...
I just wanted to correct something. I know you have a lot of new members on the Board of Education, and I've been involved with school projects for the last over 24 years, 10 on the Board of Education and 14-plus on the Board of Aldermen. And we have touched almost every school, and some of them in major ways and others in more minor ways. I would suggest that you have Mr. Smith give you at another meeting an overview of all the projects that have been done, because we have done some major renovations. Look at Broad Street. That was a major undertaking. Charlotte Ave. I mean, we go on and on. We have been involved in many, many projects. And Mr. Smith has been actively involved as well. So, I think perhaps you could have a presentation that outlines all the work that has been done.
Wasn't that Tuesday night? The Tuesday we just had? He presented the capital improvements. Right? Dr. Andrean?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you...
No, I had a comment.
Oh, sorry.
So, I just want to echo what Mr. Cummings has been stating is that to look at tonight as a start of a conversation going forward, Mr. Smith, for a number of years, has always given us a 50-year plan of when things are coming. And what I'm hearing tonight is, and what we've seen from the city over the last six, seven, eight months, is that commitment for the funding, to really have real conversations on one community working together, the transparency on where are the city's priorities and where do we all fit in together. So, we know it's a strong community, but what I took from that is, here's the city's priorities, and we're all departments working as one. And tonight is another launch on starting future conversations to take the documents that have been submitted for years, and you know, like, we have $15 million in deferred maintenance, getting $100,000. Like, we're not going back to those days. What I'm just hearing is that commitment on working together to properly fund the construction projects, our infrastructure, and more communication between the school department and the city on priorities and that transparency. So, I really thank Mr. Cummings for reinforcing, we are one city, we are working together in each department, relies heavily on each other, but it's working in conjunction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darling, then Ms. Lambfier, and then Ms. Raymond.
So, playing the game of putting it back into simple terms again, you had mentioned, like, say we have 10, the school's getting essentially three pieces of the pie, right, out of the city budget. What percentage is police and fire getting? What percentage did they get last year? What percentage did we get last year? If I could see, over the last 20 years while the school that we've all been talking about hasn't been getting renovated, if I could see that we were getting the same percentage and same care from the city budget year after year, I'd be a lot more likely to just kind of let this go, because I don't see a single asset that this city has that's better than our kids. That's our future. We don't educate them, who's gonna?
Looks like Ms. Enright has an answer for you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that question. I actually did do an analysis of the, since 2016, the pie chart that you saw. So, if you bear with me, I'll go through each line.
Please.
DPW, over that time period, had 7%. Fire Department had 1.8%. IT had 1.2%. I apologize, I have fired twice. So, fire potentially could be 2%, 3%, I apologize. Community Development had 14%. Police had 1.56%. Parking had 4.31%. Public Health had 1.4%. City Hall had .1%. All those city departments being 33.5%, .05%.
Has that been the same, like, year after year? Like, is this like a steady percentage, or is this every year we change what our values are?
That's statistical over, I mean, I could give you each year. It changes from year to year depending on the project. In 2017, we only had fire and DPW. In 2018, we only had DPW, IT, fire, and community development. So, it varies from year to year depending on the capital project plan.
And when you say city hall, .1%, do you mean the one building?
City Hall, yeah.
City Hall, yes.
Okay, so that one building has its own line? That is awesome.
It was only $208,000.
All right. Wow.
And if I could...
Yes, continue, sorry.
I just wanted to clarify with the capital plan involving deferred maintenance, that would be part of the, what we want to grow to $10 million, and the school would be part of that. And in the capital plan that we have, that's $14 million over the next seven years for the school that has been requested for the deferred maintenance. That is in the plan for, and that will be paid with cash. We're trying to be fiscally responsible with the city. Borrowing money is expensive. Everybody knows that. And we want to be responsible with the citizens' money and try to build that capital budget to that $10 million, and the school is in that.
Just a clarifying question. So, the $14 million is for the cash services towards school deferred maintenance, but anything over 1.5 million, you would want to bond?
Correct.
So, I was just wondering, you've been talking about conversations between the school board and the Board of Aldermen and the ad hoc committee and stuff. I just was wondering, when and where are those conversations are going to take place? That's why I thought that maybe it would be good to have someone from the school board on the ad hoc committee, because then there'd be a dedicated place for those conversations to happen. But what would be the alternative?
If I may, Madam Chair? So, this is the start of a conversation that I think is going to last longer than the ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee was a temporary committee. So, you know, now I would encourage, you know, the various stakeholders involved in this conversation to come together. And, you know, I think between the superintendent and I, we can convene and facilitate a discussion with the various parties to help you frame out this conversation that you need to have, and it's going to take some time.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Dowd, and then, oh, sorry, Alderman Dowd, then Ms. Raymond.
Just one other thing. I have attended all of the ad hoc committee meetings, and as your liaison from the Board of Aldermen to the Board of Education, I've been watching over the shoulder to bring in the school projects. And as you know, we added $400,000 of the budget this year for deferred maintenance to give you half a million, which is not enough, but certainly there are enough projects to cover. But the, there are several other city projects that need to be done, and those have sort of been deferred because of the school projects, none the least of which is this building right here, and several other projects that are ongoing. And so, we are working on projects right now that are ongoing, Main Dunstable, Birch Hill, Dr. Crisp with the security vestibule project, New Surles. So, there's a number of things going on that are being spent with the school department, but no major new efforts until some of these other things are covered.
Yeah, I think what Ms. Regan, Ms. Lambfier is, so I think we're having two kind of discussions right now, is future planning, but also how do we prevent us from getting into a situation where we have one building that's just so far behind? I think Ms. Lambfier would like us to be able, when we're going forward and discussing this, that we're not just forgetting about one school. Am I correct in that? So, it's kind of two separate conversations.
Well, I just wanted us to be aware of what the funding situation was. I know Alderman Dowd always represents us very well on the, in everything. It's just that it's, we don't hear from Alderman Dowd at every meeting or every couple of months, or... So, a lot of times, a lot of times the JSSBC hears about it, but not the full board. So, I guess, you know, maybe we should, maybe I should start paying more attention to JSSBC meetings. But thank you, Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Raymond, and then Ms. Lambfier.
I wanted to speak to Regan's thing, if possible.
Yeah, pardon?
I wanted to speak to what Regan was saying, if possible.
Well, Ms. Raymond, I've already bumped twice.
It's okay. I just, I mean, I just, I think as we're having this discussion about looking backwards and forwards, I think it's important that we note that we're sitting in a beautiful new building, right? And we have two other middle schools that were fully renovated and are gorgeous. And I hope, just to plug in there, that we have open houses so that the taxpayers can see, especially compared to Elm Street. But we also did security vestibule projects on six, eight of the schools? I'm trying to remember over, since I got on the board, which was eight over the last seven years. So, it's been, there's been other stuff that I think hasn't really come into this conversation that was really targeted about putting the safety and security of our community's children first. And I think we also need to be, I don't know, I like the ad hoc committee, I like the fact that we're paying attention to the fact that we need firemen with, you know, fire trucks and buildings that don't have floors rotting out so that, you know, they can keep us safe as a community as well. But I wanted to go back to numbers just a little bit, because I'm a copious note-taker, and I didn't catch, Mr. Cummings had said earlier, that a certain amount, a certain number of million dollars corresponded with a 1% increase, and I didn't write it down fast enough, and now it's gone out of my brain. I know it's heuristic, but I still would like to have it.
If I may, Madam?
Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you. So, again, this is just a rough guideline, and we use it internally to help us as we're working, and so, it's a little trick of the trade.
Right, I know, it's not like a hard and fast rule.
Correct. Every two and a half million dollars we add to the operational budget, we're adding approximately 1% on average to the property taxpayer.
Okay. So, two and a half million to 1%?
Equals about 1% on average on the tax bill.
Wow. Wow, that's a lot smaller number than I had thought. So, I'm glad you repeated it. Thank you.
Which is why we're having this conversation.
No, I think all of this is healthy, so...
It's much easier to see clearly when you understand what's going on, whereas, that's what we're doing. Ms. Darling?
Thank you. And Mr. Dowd, I really appreciate that you look out for the BOE. I know that, I'm told you always do. I have not been to a JSSBC meeting, because like I said the other day for finance synopsis, I don't understand half of it. However, I do agree with Regan that there should be somebody from the Board of Education on the ad hoc committee, because education is so essential to any community, especially our city. Just because our birth rates are down does not necessarily mean that we stop paying attention to the kiddos. So, if we could maybe find a way to discuss either tonight or another night, how to get a BOE member to also be a part of that, that would be so appreciated.
We can work with the city on that. I think that that's future planning and goal-setting. I want to focus on hard numbers and what is currently going on. I think we're already, like, walking the fine line between hypothetical options right now with it not being fully approved, instead of going fully into hypotheticals, which would be how we can work together as a city to come up with this. So, we'll put a pin in that, but you know I will come back to it. Okay? Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Cummings? Okay. Ms. Enright?
I would just like to make one note that all of the ad hoc committee meetings were recorded.
Yeah.
So, if anybody wants to go and see how Alderman Dowd really did do some really good fighting for you, I would recommend that you go watch them.
I went to several of the meetings and watched all of them on TV, and it was, and then I got sucked into the YouTube BOE meetings, which are much more boring than our meetings, sorry to say, but you guys do, there is a lot of information that if you're not paying attention to every single meeting, you could miss a lot of information. So, I hate to say that I've been an elected official for this long and didn't realize you guys did so much work, so... So, thank you. So, hand it over to Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board members. Matt Sullivan, Community Development Division Director. I'll just note that Alderman Dowd's participation was active on the committee despite the fact that he was not even a committee member. And so, you're represented by a very diligent member of the Board of Aldermen, and I thank him for his participation in that exercise. Now, for something completely different. We're going to shift direction a little bit and really take a step back and talk about some of the direction that our city is heading in from sort of a land-use perspective, but also from a community development perspective. And the reason we wanted to do that this evening is, now that you have a fairly good understanding of the fiscal constraint, I'll refer to it as, and what that looks like over the next five years, I think it's important for us to understand as a community and together with the Board of Education and the Board of Aldermen, what growth might look like, what housing development changes might look like, and how that might inform not only our capital planning exercises, but also the very specific capital projects that we'd like to undertake as a committee. And that was certainly part of the discussion at the ad hoc committee level, but I think it's important perspective as you move forward in this conversation, as it's been described this evening. And so, I'm going to do just a few slides, very high-level overview of a few larger comprehensive planning efforts that we've been working on. And I'm going to end by talking a little bit about some of the work that's been done by this Board of Education and consultants over the past couple of years. To sort of jump ahead to that, I looked over some demographics and other housing development information while preparing for this evening's discussion, and I did that without looking back at the consultant work that was done over the past few years relative to enrollment and school recommendations. And then, when I completed my review and looked at housing development across the community, I then went back and saw whether my conclusions aligned or did not align with what had been represented in those presentations. And I'll give you my perspective at the end of the discussion tonight. But of course, it represents perspective and a snapshot in time. Development is a very fluid thing, as are the city's priorities from a land-use perspective. And so, I think it's important to recognize that this may change in six months or a year, but it's important to understand where we are now. So, really, taking a step back, if you're not already aware, the city of Nashua has what's referred to as a master planning document. And from a technical perspective, this is the document that makes recommendations about what different land-use regulations and ordinances might exist in the city and how they might need to change, and how the city's development priorities should be defined and carried out. It's a 100-page document, 150 pages in fact, but in the end, what it really represents is a set of concise recommendations and goals about housing policy, conservation policy, and other land-use policies. But of course, it shapes the very underpinning or the foundation of what we think development might look like moving forward, and there are pretty clear relationships between development activity and of course, school enrollment and the school facilities themselves. And I think those are fairly self-evident, but I'll talk a little bit about that as the evening goes on tonight. If you don't look at maps every day, you're probably thinking, "What the heck is this thing?", and you certainly can't read the text that's next to it. But I just want to say that this is the, this is a map of the city of Nashua, and what's important to understand about the 2020, 21 master plan that the city adopted, and it's pertinent to our conversation this evening, is that the city really only contemplates over the next 10 years that new development activities or significant redevelopment activity will happen within the yellow areas on this map. And if you don't look at this map of the city of Nashua every day like I do, let me quickly tell you a few of these, so you have some context. We're talking about the Amherst Street corridor, we're talking about DW Highway in South Nashua near the mall, we're talking about areas like Northeast Boulevard, Broad Street, near the downtown core, some very specific sites like Daniel Webster College and Beazer, if you haven't heard of those, I'm happy to talk after about what those are. And then, really more than anything, our East Hall Street corridor over towards the Hudson Town Line and downtown. That's where we're seeing development right now, that's where there's new interest. But there are some other smaller developments in other sections of the city, and I'll talk about those a little bit more this evening, including some that are fairly adjacent to where we're sitting this evening over in the southwest quad. But what's important to understand is that generally, this is where the city felt, as part of its public engagement process, that development would happen and really where development should be focused. There were other things there that I think are in the plan that I think are important to understand, and they're almost competing ideals, but these things can live in harmony. And one of those is the idea that we should prioritize conservation and preservation of natural resources. So, it is possible to have development-focused areas, and of course, to preserve land. Those are just happening in different sections of the city, in different spatial areas. And so, I think it's important to understand that now, because we're not just a community that's developing, we're a community that's developing but also preserving other sections of the city, and that distinction's very, very, very critical in the context of the conversation. And I'll point out here, the primary goal from this plan, in my opinion, is that housing development... development is critical. And it's important, it's clear that when this was written in 2021 and certainly where we are today, affordable housing, general housing stock availability, that continues to be perhaps the most critical issue across the community. And so, if you're asking yourself, why is our city developing? Why are we prioritizing this? We're hearing across the board, even from those who already live here, and not just those that don't yet, that housing availability is a critical thing. And so a lot of our goals are oriented around that. To speak quickly to that and what we're seeing in both the existing market and maybe just the housing market that's on the horizon as we can see it, new development is happening. We've seen articles about it in a variety of publications, specifically about Nashua, about Manchester, Southern New Hampshire is a very, a very hot real estate market, as you're probably aware. But that development has largely been in really two formats. One being multifamily, these are apartments and that can range anywhere from four units in a building all the way up to some of the structures I've shown here, hundreds of units in a building. These are the types of projects that we are seeing submitted to the city for review and approval and in fact, some of these are under construction or have recently been constructed and occupied. Multifamily is really the housing typology, as we refer to it, that we see emerging and established in the community right now. We do see limited townhome and other development going on, but it's more site-specific and it's not something that is concentrated within our market, that we are working to try and change that a little bit. But what's important to identify is what we're not seeing, and that is, we are not seeing traditional subdivisions, if you will, detached, single-family homes. And the relevance, of course, is that those are typically the types of structures or homes that generate school children. And there are plenty, there's plenty of demographic and other enrollment information out there to support this, but that's the case certainly here in Nashua. An apartment is much less likely to generate a school child than a single-family home or a single-family detached dwelling unit. And, as a result, the fact that we don't see new single-family homes coming online and we see significantly more multifamily developments coming in, leads me to believe, it's just a sort of an immediate observation, that it's unlikely that this new development that we see in the next five to 10 years is going to generate significantly new numbers of school-aged children. And so I think that's important to understand as we talk about both upgrades to existing facilities and possible decisions that might need to be made down the road about strategically prioritizing investments in those facilities as well. So, I wanted to just talk a little bit more about another effort that's underway and I know this text is a little bit small, so I hope everyone can see it. I mentioned that we have this master plan thing, this larger concept that we're working on in the city, but that doesn't really change itself. It doesn't really change the laws, the ordinances, the regulations that actually control what development happens. And so although we have this 2021 master plan, it's a plan. It doesn't directly dictate the type of housing or where that housing will be or what it will look like. And so what we're working on right now and that we hope to have completed over the next year and a half is actually taking that plan and letting, laying out a series of land use regulations based on the feedback that we've gotten both as part of the master plan and as part of recent public input sessions, putting pen to paper and redefining several of what we refer to as the zoning districts across the city. And this may sound technical and not to sidebar to zoning, but I hope you all know this impacts you every day, whether it's, you know, how close your neighbor's building is to your property, whether it's, whether you can have chickens on your property, whether it's whether you can park your car in the front yard. Zoning is real. It's not always these larger, complicated structures. And so, updating the land use code really does matter and it could very well have implications to everybody sitting in this room, so this is important. And this is free marketing for me to say, pay attention to this effort as well because it's a really important one. But the land use code is underway and what we think will happen is that there will, surprise, surprise, there will be a focus in those redevelopment areas that were identified within the master plan. Again, that's that Amherst Street corridor, the Daniel Webster corridor downtown. That's where we anticipate doing a couple different things and that includes increasing density, more housing units, particularly to address that housing shortage and of course, to address some of the affordable housing challenges that we have. There will also be additional housing and more mixed-use development in many of the corridors that I'm discussing tonight. And there may be some new housing development areas like the Broad Street area or on some of these site-specific areas like Daniel Webster College. There have been a lot of community conversations about introducing housing into those environments as well. So new housing units are on the forefront of this code update. What we don't anticipate will happen is land use regulations that significantly change the character of the area, like the area that we're in here today. And what I mean by that is the Maplewood subdivision, the single-family home areas of our, of our community are unlikely to change substantially. So where you see a traditional subdivision or where you might live, if you live in a single-family home, it's very unlikely, in fact, it's near impossible, and yet you can take my word for it, it's very unlikely that we're going to suddenly be building apartments in those areas. That's not a goal of this land use code. And the important piece of that is, we don't believe that we are, again, we are going to be substantially increasing the number of housing units created in the community. We have goals to create 5,000 units over the next five years or so. We've made some pretty significant strides towards doing that. But the idea that suddenly we'll have 10,000 new single-family homes or even 10,000 housing units total, it's not going to happen. We have very real development constraints that will prevent us from doing that. Just to kind of move into some of the products that we're working on as part of the land use code, this is actually, this is not from the master plan, this is some areas that we're focused on with that land use code. I hope what you see, if we flip back and forth, is that the areas that are colored are pretty similar between these two plans. And again, these are the focal areas for introducing new zoning across the city. Not going to go into detail about each of these, but if you want to chat after the meeting about your property or an area that you're concerned about, I'm happy to do that. It's really important input for us to get as we're going through this process. But again, these are our focus areas. We're hoping to have a draft of our zoning map available in August of this year. We're going to actually take a year and a half collecting feedback on that, tweaking that, making adjustments. We think it's really important to sort of test it with the community and we'll write up, we'll be writing up a basic code as well. But again, I want the theme here to be that housing, while it's being created, is likely to be in a form that does not generate school children. I think that's really important to understand during tonight's conversation. I mentioned at the beginning that anything can change. It's unlikely that we see a significant change that will start to produce single-family homes. And again, that's because of that fact that we have very constrained land. We have very limited large development tracks that could be actually developed into subdivisions. You'll hear about them, a couple happen every year throughout the city, but large-scale development is not going to happen the way that it happened in the 80s particularly. It's simply not a reality that we're in today. And finally, relative to the land use code update, I just wanted to share this. This is a sort of a sneak peek at our draft zoning map and you probably can't read all of these designations, but essentially the areas in green are on here again. I hope they align with the prior maps that I've shown. These areas in green are unlikely to change significantly and very, will be very similar to the current land use codes and therefore unlikely to generate significant new development in those particular areas. So I wanted to sidebar and I really did feel it's important to discuss some of the work that was done by your consultant several years ago, BIS LLC. I took a look back to this presentation. As I mentioned, I did that after looking at some of our demographic information. Before I get into this, to speak to a couple other demographic things that I found, of course, and I'll cut to the chase, they align pretty well with what the consultant found. Birth rates are certainly diminished. Population change is happening. We are, we are growing, however, that growth is moderate. So population projections that are updated on a fairly regular basis do show that we will grow as a city, but we're not going to jump from our current population to be 110,000 quickly. That's simply not going to happen. We may get there over the course of 20 years, 30 years, but it will be a slow incremental growth. There are, of course, some factors that we simply can't anticipate fully. I'll pick one that sticks out to me. Obviously, we have some, there are sort of climate-based migration patterns happening across the United States as certain areas are more dry and there are drought crises. We do see more folks coming to the northeast and areas that don't have those challenges, but we can't really reflect that trend in a lot of the population projection, other projection work that we look at across the state. So there are unknowns, but those unknowns are likely, are unlikely to yield substantial changes in population, birth rates and the like. So I hope that you're familiar with some of the graphics here and I won't go into great detail, but I just wanted to, these are the ones that stuck out to me as, after I looked at what we're seeing for housing and demographics versus what your consultant had looked at. Up in the upper left-hand corner here, these are pretty straightforward, these are the district enrollment projections and they sort of looked at three scenarios, high, medium and low. I can't speak to the actual methodology that the consultant used, although it was described in the work that was done, but taking this approach is very common within sort of the projection industry. And so even in scenarios of high growth, the district enrollment is projected to come down. And again, barring some significant change in our land use policies and creation of more housing, I tend to agree with that. So I think it's important to just look at that issue and how it might have an implication on school facilities moving forward. Birth rates are, sort of speak for themselves and I also think that in the lower left here, this is children under age five. We are, based on population projections, we expect those numbers to decrease and certainly when children under age of five are diminishing, that means less children going into the school system. So that's just something to be cognizant of. But this all speaks to the idea that new family formation and school children being generated are something to keep an eye on and may lead to some conversations about city facilities and school facilities as well. And then upper right-hand corner, you certainly can't read that, but the large pie chart, the large red slice of this pie chart up here, and this is a summary of family households in the Nashua School District, this large red component of this is a married couple family with no children under 18. So this is, this is family households within the district. We have a lot of folks that are not generating children within the district area and that's really important to identify. We're not unique, of course, and I'm sure your consultant gave a similar presentation. This is a statewide crisis, but we're, as a, as a district, from what I've seen, we're not bucking many of the trends that similar districts are seeing across the state. And so I went a little deeper into some of the conclusions and I had no affiliation with this work that was done and so I tried to review this objectively. The conclusions from the district study are left here relative to birth rates, demographic trends related to school-aged populations, all the things I've just talked about, and the lack of new residential units being built and the number of children being introduced as a result of those. The conclusion is that we do not agree and functionally, I do not agree or do not disagree with the findings of the consultant. I can't speak to all of the work that they did and the detailed calculations that were done to generate the tables, including the one at right. But based on that housing development that we're seeing and expect across the next 10 years, the direction that we think that the city is headed in from a land use policy perspective and from a redevelopment and new development perspective, generally I do think that there are going to be challenges introducing new school census into the school districts. And so, I wanted to put the table in right on my last slide because I'm not certain what the, what the board will do with this and I know this may be a bit of an incendiary piece of information here in a sense, but I do think what this ultimately leads to, and particularly going on Director Cummings' comments, is how will the city and how will the school make decisions about facilities moving forward? It's a critical question that's before you and I think there were some great questions from over there this evening about what the different levers are we can pull to change how money is being allocated. But ultimately, I think there will be some critical decisions. I'm not saying anything you don't know. In fact, I'm stating the obvious, I think. But there will need to likely be discussions as all of these facilities remain online, school enrollment continues to diminish or stabilizes, and we certainly look forward to be a partner in those discussions. I think, I don't want to say this evening and the presence of city staff at this meeting is unprecedented. I don't think that's the case and certainly Alderman Dowd has been an active participant. But I do think this is representative of the beginning of a very important conversation moving forward about how capital assets are managed and I believe that the demographics and housing developments influencing the community will be a critical piece of that. So I'll close there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or certainly give opinions as they may be appropriate based on what we're seeing across the community.
Thank you. Ms. Lamphier?
I just, you said that we might see increased density in housing in certain areas of the city?
Yeah.
And does it track that in those, in those more densely, dense areas, that we would see more children in those areas as time goes on?
So, it's a great question. And so, just to make sure I understand what you're asking, so the areas where we anticipate either more density being, more dense housing units being created or the regulations being tweaked to allow more density, do we anticipate more children being produced as a result? So you have sort of two competing factors that will lead me to a bit of an I-don't-know answer, but let me just explain what those factors are in my mind. One, if we adjust the density regulations to allow more housing, we will be creating more housing units that are, that are currently there. In a normal child-producing scenario, we would expect increased enrollment as a result of that, if you bring more units online. But based on the reduction in child production and the general birth rates, birth rate diminishment that we're seeing, it's possible that even with additional units being brought online, there will be sort of a crossing of diminishing birth rates that may result in a net negative, a net, a net neutral or a net negative of new children being introduced. And so it's a bit of an unknown, but increasing density, producing housing units, in my opinion, is not a guarantee of additional school children in the current environment that we're in.
If I could follow on to that, a lot of that is because of the typology of what we're building.
Yeah.
The built product is not one that you typically see school children come with.
And just, if I may just quickly clarify.
How does, how does the density of, like, the downtown area, the density of children there compare to the density of children, like, say, in this neighborhood?
So it's a bit of a challenging question to answer. So when you say density, I'm going to assume that you mean for a given dwelling unit, rather than, you know, area of land, but for a given dwelling unit, because the units in the downtown are multifamily units, they're less likely to produce school children on a unit-by-unit basis. That said, if you were to look at an acre of land in the downtown core, you're likely to have more school children coming out of that acre because the housing is much more dense. Versus here, where we have maybe only a couple of homes across an acre, the school children might be far less. But the reality is that a single-family home as a unit is far more likely to produce a school child than a multifamily unit. But multifamily units are more dense. So I hope that.
Yes, I guess that definitely answers my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So, I guess I have, I wanted to say thank you for putting this together and presenting it to us. I guess my question is, so you're presenting it to the school board, we're talking about schools and we're talking about there's less children for the schools. So, from the city side, I wanted to ask, what are we doing to bring more of that? Because you guys get to decide who builds in these dense things, these dense buildings, you guys get to decide that. So going forward as a strategic plan, how are we going to turn that around because the children are our future?
So, a couple comments. I think I would maybe rephrase the idea that we are the decision-makers when it comes to who builds. We create the framework and the regulations in which people decide to come forward and build. And so, you know, we decide what the density regulations are, we decide what areas are zoned for certain types of housing. As far as who actually does that development, that's sort of, I tend to resist this phrase, but it's true, it's sort of up to the market, if you will. But, to your, to your question, one of the things that I think that is very interesting, I actually meant to touch on this in my presentation, is that most of the market right now is creating studio apartments, one-bedroom apartments and two-bedroom apartments. That's what we're seeing. And if you think about a studio, one-bedroom or two-bedroom, it's challenging to have children within an environment that's so small and still have space for all the necessary, the needs. One of the things that the city can look at is the idea of taking actions to incentivize the creation of larger, more bedroom multifamily units. So the idea of having more three-bedrooms, more four-bedrooms, working with developers and the development community to create more options within these developments that are done. That's one thing we can control and one, I should have pointed this out before, three-bedroom apartments, four-bedroom apartments, five-bedrooms, those are tailored towards families and children. So those units are directly tied to childbearing households. So I would say one direct answer to you is that we could explore actions as a city to allow for more of those larger multifamily units in the areas that we anticipate to be developed. Some of that will be a conversation with the development community because it's challenging to regulate that, but that's something that we would be more than happy to look into because that would be a direct impact, I believe.
I think Mr. Cummings has a response as well.
Yes, thank you. As much as Director Sullivan doesn't like the, it's a market or it's up to the market, I love that, right? As the former Economic Development Director for the city, I often say it's up to the market. The market's the market. We can nudge it, we can slow it down, but the market's the market and we can, we can only do so much. And so, Director Sullivan's absolutely correct when he says that we can work with the developer, we can try to encourage, we can try to incentivize, we can build out the land use controls framework to try to encourage more building of more bedrooms within a unit. But the one thing I've learned over the years is a developer, a good sophisticated, disciplined But the one thing I've learned over the years is a developer, a good sophisticated, disciplined real estate developer, will know their product and will only develop what they believe that they can actually do. And so if they see a develop, so if they see the market only able to absorb two-bedroom units, that's all that they're going to build. We can try to encourage them to do more, but they will, they will work within the constraints of the, of the market. And so, with that being said, that's one of the reasons why you're seeing the type of building that you're seeing right now. I wanted to just quickly add on, if I may, Madam Chair. You may have heard during the presentation that you're not seeing a lot of single-family, detached building occurring, and you may ask the question, well, why is that? And the reality is, is because from a real estate finance perspective, it's just cost-prohibitive to do at this point in time. And so, you see these real estate developers pivoting and trying to figure out a way to how can they develop and make a reasonable return on their investment? And so, that is one of the reasons why you're seeing multifamily construction occurring like the way you're doing now, because, you know, the, the reality of the situation is if you have a plot of land and you're trying to develop it horizontally, you're not going to be able to, as a developer, create the amount of lots that you need to be able to get the return you want when you're trying to lay out a road, sewer system, water line, all these infrastructure improvements that need to be in place to be able to then sell a lot or a constructed house at whatever the median household price is for that, for that construction that you're doing. And so, because of that, and you're, you're seeing these real estate developers look towards differing type of building products that can help them get the returns that they want, and that is just indicative of the market.
Can I, I have a clarifying question in regards to that. I actually got to sit through some fund zoning and housing seminars through the Greater Nashua Leadership. Go do it if you can, it's awesome. But one of the things, and clarify if I'm wrong, but one of the things that I thought was really neat when we're talking about new housing developments is what you were talking about with the roads, the sewers, the gas lines, utilities. That's, that's a cost burden on the city to bring out. So if we want to be building 30 new houses, that means that the city is going in and investing money in kind of the underground supports, which would then cost us money, raise our tax rate until we're able to even out a little bit, but it's more cost-efficient for the city to do the larger apartment dwellings, and we can't do more multifamily buildings. So, you know, adding, you know, the quadruple, the duplexes, the quadruple duplexes, whatever, because there's not enough space for cars. This was the most interesting day I've ever had in my entire life, was learning about why you can only have a driveway that's a certain size with a certain amount of bedrooms in a house. Fascinating. I really, I highly recommend it, but there's a reason that we lean towards apartment buildings and not single families or duplexes, and why you're pushing, I'll push auxiliary dwelling units because I know that's a big thing lately, but, sorry, I'm a super nerd about this. But that's also cost prohibitive to the city to not be doing apartment buildings. I'm just right, right?
Yeah, so, so I just, I, I forget, did we talk about that? I don't, did we talk about that at the day? I don't remember.
You, and I was like, I found the guy.
I must have been in a mood to talk about that. So it's absolutely true, and so it's one of the things, you know, we are not, you know, single-family housing is, is critical, right? Like, we need single-family homes for folks, there needs to be that availability, but single-family homes, very spread-out construction, that is very impactful to the taxpayer. It creates infrastructure that's very expensive to maintain. It is far, 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 far more inefficient from an infrastructure cost perspective than one large multifamily building. Does that mean we should only do multifamily buildings? Of course not. But when we're prioritizing future investments and trying to provide housing stock quickly, that's why multifamily makes a lot of sense. And to the questions about taxpayer burden that have been raised tonight, we're sensitive to that, and we've done a lot of study with some outside consultants to determine just what that delta is between infrastructure impacts of single-family versus multifamily. So I'm, I'm happy you remembered that. It's a very, it's a topic of mine that I love, and glad to talk about it.
I know, I could have just kept talking to you for like hours and hours, and be like, tell me more about these driveway problems. Sorry, Ms. Daniels-Williams had a follow-up question, and then I'll go to Ms. Raymond, and then Mr. Johnson.
So again, I'm very thankful for all the information that everyone is providing. I just wanted to know, you said, over the next year, from August to August, you will be doing these zoning things and everything, and I just wanted to see if we could make an appeal to protect some of this land for these housing units, because otherwise, we're not going to have kids, because this is what you're telling us, right? So how do we protect our city and bring kids in, families to have kids in these single dwelling units, if all we're doing is that? I understand the tax burden, I understand that, but can we find a balance? Is all I'm asking, putting it out there, and that's-
And I think my response would be, absolutely. I mean, I think you actually raised a great question before, and, and it's not just single-family homes. It's creating different types of housing stock that might be, that might be child-generating or family-generating. And so, we've seen a lot of innovative things across the state of New Hampshire, cottage-style developments, where you have a, a sort of an urban plot of land with many different detached housing units on it. So it's, it's not multifamily where there are apartments. It's also not your traditional single-family subdivision. It's something in the middle. That might be something that allows for a family to, to live for an extended period of time, introduce children into the school system. And so, we're very much looking at, within that zoning code update, we're looking at some of those alternative housing types that might allow that very thing to happen. And to make a very sort of fuzzy statement, you know, one of the things we can also do is just continue to make investments in the community and make it a great place to raise a family, and I know that may sound silly in a way, but being an attractive community for families to move to is an important, important part of this equation. And that means investments in public infrastructure, investments in educational facilities, certainly. That's exactly why we're here tonight. Those things absolutely matter. And so, that's the, that's the tie that I see between this fiscal planning and our development trends. To continue to be the successful community that we've been for many, many decades, centuries, we're going to need to talk about how we spend this money responsibly.
Ms. Raymond, then Mr. Johnson.
So yeah, I mean, I think to piggyback on that, I mean, we're, we're sitting in a beautiful school that, I mean, I would love for my kids to have gone to a beautiful school like this. And mine are too old now. But I'm just wondering, as we look at some of these zoning things, it's very expensive to the taxpayers when we lose students. I mean, this year, it's $4,100 a student from the state, and if we don't change our number of facilities, that's money that has to be made up by the local taxpayer. And so, for every kid that we lose, we, we really impact every taxpayer in the state, in the city. So I guess my question is, is part of this zoning process, is there a way to incentivize developers for making apartments that are more attractive to people with young children? Because I'm thinking about the Bronstein-Tamonahan, for example. We took a, a community where everybody had a private patio, and we put up high-rises where there was no outside space. So, as a parent who had toddlers in an apartment, I know how difficult it is when you just want them to do an art project or play Play-Doh in a safe, supervised place that isn't on your carpet. You know, having a park down the street is not accessible in the way that a balcony or a patio on your apartment is. And I can see families with young children feeling like, okay, this apartment that has a private balcony where I can grow some plants and have my kid do their art outside where it's not messing up my apartment, as being much more attractive than a high-rise where I have to load up my small children and their stroller and walk two blocks to get to outside space.
Absolutely. I think design is critical. We've seen a few projects recently where the developers have, have worked with us, in some cases reluctantly, in some cases actively, to try and modify or design their projects to provide amenities that, whether they're play areas, whether they're community gardens, whether they're more recreational or green spaces, you know, the developer is sensitive to the idea that to get people to live there and to be a stable developer, they need to provide attractive housing that's, that's, that's great for a variety of different generations. I think we could be more clear in how we shape that design as a city to yield exactly what you're talking about. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, there's only so much we can do, obviously, because of that sort of market dynamic to it. But we have a very, you know, we have an iterative and active design process with developers in the city of Nashua. We have good relationships, and that gives us the ability to have these very conversations with them based on what we're hearing tonight. I mean, it's important feedback that we're hearing that this continues to be a priority for the board, and we can try and apply it as part of our development conversations.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I'm just thinking about my own neighborhood. I live down the street from Birch Hill now, and there are no, my kids are the only children on my entire street, and they're teenagers now. That's not true, there's one other seventh grader on my street, and that's it. And I know some of my neighbors would downsize if they could A, afford to it, but two, they don't want to live in a high-rise downtown. They want a, a retirement place where they can still have their plants and have their dog and have the stuff. And so, we're not turning over housing the way that we used to. And I know that, you know, my neighborhood, for example, in the 80s and the 70s when it was built, was all families with children. And so, I guess my question is, how can we incentivize developers to think about not just housing for young families, but housing for retirees that would open up single-family homes for the families that want those? Like, I'm just, I'm really, I'm really worried about how much money it's costing us to lose kids.
So, a couple responses to that. It's amazing over the last couple of years, or the last few decades, I guess, how attractive the small ranch home has become to people, because particularly as you move into older ages, you need a more accessible home. You want something that's easy to move around. They tend to be in good locations, generally. They're walkable, or you can get to services and amenities. And so, I think senior housing is a critical thing that we, I don't want to say we forget about it in, in these conversations, but in order to, you made this point, part of creating, making housing available is providing a place for folks to move into when they're done with their current space, whether that's downsizing or not. And so, we've had a complicated relationship with senior housing, I think, across the city of Nashua. We struggle with it sometimes, the idea of age restriction, but the idea, the reality is, we have to provide it. Folks want to stay in this community. Not everyone is interested in moving to Florida when they retire. And so, and, and I think that we need to provide that opportunity. So, I'll be frank, I have generally pushed back against age-restricted housing because I think that it may limit the, the ability to have the, the type of community that a lot of folks want, but if that's the necessary mechanism for us to create senior housing, then I think it's something that we need to keep in the land use code, and we have no plans to remove senior housing at this time from our land use code completely.
I think mixed housing is best for everybody.
I agree.
Like, I just think it's a healthy community, but, but I think that the elements that make it attractive to retirees are similar to the elements that make it attractive to-
Absolutely.
People with young children, so. I'm done.
I will not get on that soapbox today. I think we all know how I feel about housing and healthcare and aging populations, and that's another three-day conversation, whoever wants to go on a conference with me. Ms. Daniels-Williams had a follow-up question, I didn't go back to you, but Mr. Johnson first. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mine actually, Heather sort of touched on what I was going to bring up, which is, what are we, it seems from the city that people are staying more. Are you seeing that, where there's less single housing becoming available because people are sort of not moving on and into other housing?
Absolutely. I, I think it's, there are two factors, though. One, Nashua's a great place to live, but two, there is a real lack of ability for folks to move between housing right now because of the, the interest rates and the price of moving to another home. And so, I think that's another factor. I do think people will generally stay in Nashua because it is a great community, but certainly people are staying put because it's very difficult for them to achieve other housing opportunity.
I'll just put a little, a little touch on that, because this is, this is the world in which I live during the day, but people go from their paid-off homes, and when you step into long-term care, it's on average $10,000 a month to live in long-term care and $8,000 a month to go into assisted living, and the only payer source for those two things outside of cash is Medicaid. So there is, unless you are extremely wealthy or extremely poor, you are stuck in your house.
And to that point, 30, 40 years ago, there was this big concept about aging in place. And so, you age in place now for the very reasons that were just mentioned. What is the negative externality to that? Is the fact that you're not opening up housing stock for new families.
Right. Ms. Daniels-Williams? Okay. Ms. Lamphier?
I just thought of it because you mentioned that people don't really want to move to Florida anymore, and you were talking about climate-
No one does.
Climate people.
Yeah.
You know, like, if, if we can keep these older people in Nashua, instead of losing them to Florida, that would, that would help with, with our, with our whole community. So I think it's really important to do what Ms. Raymond said and really kind of start to focus on, on senior housing. It's like a really brilliant idea, makes a lot of sense.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Prynne?
I hope I can formulate this well, but I think it feels like it's a bit of a catch-22. I hope that the city is focusing on bringing families in, because families are important to the community, but at the same time, we need to make sure we're also investing in the schools, because if we make the schools attractive, families are going to want to live here, and we need to have that for them. It's, it's just so important.
Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed.
Do you guys have demographics or maybe research that you can point us in the direction of, of maybe there's a correlation between families who are more inclined to be apartment-living with younger children with, with the types of schooling that's available? Like, are these families typically going to charter schools? Are they going to private schools? Are they sticking with public education?
I, I don't know for a fact, but I'm not aware of any data that specifically tie those factors together. I think you could maybe draw some conclusions based on independent data sets, but I don't know that there's any data, that there are any data out there tying all of those things together. You can certainly, you know, you can arrive at some of that, some, something about, you know, the types of incomes in certain areas and those that are generating children, and we'd be happy to provide that information, but pulling in the type of school, I'm not sure that's something that's readily available, unfortunately, at least not to my knowledge, but I'm happy to look.
That would just be interesting, if there was a way that we could cater our schools to families who enjoy apartment living and living downtown and having a walkable farmer's market right outside on the weekends. Like, you know, if, if we're working together as a team, how do we create the schools that support families who want that more of an urban dwelling?
I mean, I would just point out that it's not just public schools that are losing enrollment. Private schools are losing enrollment at multiple times the rate that public schools are. I mean, there were two private schools in Nashua that have closed in the last seven years. You know, charter schools are holding steady. The only demographic that's going up is homeschooling, and it's not going up enough to offset the decrease in enrollment, and this is statewide and nationally.
Right.
So, we just have less kids.
Yeah, they're expensive.
Ms. Daniels-Williams, then Mr. Johnson, and I saw Mr. Cummings had a hand raised as well.
So, I, my question is, if we know what the problem is of why we're not bringing families, which you had stated is because we don't have the land available to build these single homes, because it's expensive to build the water, the, put all the lines and stuff in it, why don't we invest in that so that it would turn over to the school? Like, you know, we, we want to bring the kids back to Nashua, right? We want to continue to grow a healthy, strong gateway city, right?
So the, the response I would give to that is it's, I don't want the conclusion to be that's the only factor. That's, that's, but it's a hu, it's a, it's a huge factor. It's a huge factor, but it's only such a large factor because in Nashua, school-age children are associated with single-family homes. That's not the case if you were to go to New York City or some other area. And so, that's a, that's a Nashua, it's not unique to Nashua, but it is our scenario here. And so, I think part of what we need to do is produce housing stock in different forms that is attractive to those families. Because the other side of what I'm saying is that single-family homes are some of the least efficient, most impactful, and least in alignment with some of the city's goals. Do we need to produce them? Absolutely. But we need to find ways to provide housing opportunity in other forms that better align with the city's long-term goals and also produce schoolchildren. So I hope I've said that clearly, but it's not just producing single-family homes. In fact, it's, it's almost the opposite. It's doing some of that, but also finding other ways to provide opportunity for families in different types of housing.
Mr. Johnson, then Ms. Darling.
Just before I get to my question, will all this be available somewhere for people to view online?
Yeah, we're happy to, I mean, I'm happy to make my presentation available.
Yeah, because, yeah, we, we don't have it here, so.
Sure.
The other question is, with the- Another question is, with the population of children, do you see the population of children changing by area? Like, are some areas losing more children and some areas staying steady or gaining more children?
I actually, I did not look at that in advance of tonight, and perhaps I should have. I'm happy to look into it. I believe that the consultant you had may have looked at this very issue, and I can't recall what they had concluded. And though I'd like to paint it with what I believe the situation is, I probably should confirm those data before I make any statements this evening.
Thanks.
But if I, if I may, but taking that, and then the next step is we layer in on top where we think growth is going to occur in the city over the next five, 10, 20 years, whatever it may be, it will help give you good planning tools so then you can develop some guidance and policies around that as to how you want to, you know, steward this, this school system. And that's, that's critical, and that's something that, you know, community development can do. And then, the one thing I want to kind of illustrate that hasn't been touched upon yet tonight, but the amount of time it takes to actually make a housing development actually happen or occur. So, I can't tell you how long it takes. People would be surprised at, if I said, "Years." At this stage in Nashua, because of the type of development that we need and have in the land area that's available, it takes years to put some of these projects together. And so, it's not unrealistic for us to project within some reasonable competence what it's going to look like over a five- or 10-year horizon, because within that timeframe, major housing developments, you're only going to see two to five. And that's just, that's just a fact that we deal with.
If I may just add to that quickly, there's a very, a very public housing redevelopment that's being planned right now by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in the area off of Burke Street. There are public presentations being made of it. It's Maynard Homes. To give a little sense of the timeline that Director Cummings is talking about, that project is not anticipated to be complete, even if work starts over the next year for another three years after that. And so it's, it's typically three to four years based on the complexity of the project from getting the permits and the approvals through the local process, all the way to actually occupying it with families and individuals as well. It's a long process.
And another example of that, some of you may have heard about the Mohawk Tannery redevelopment. So we're talking about 546 of new units. If that was to occur, the, the schedule of housing development implementation, if you will, is over a 10-year period. So you wouldn't see all those units arrive within the first couple of years. It's a phased approach where we're looking to see that 500-plus units. You're not going to see that if they was to start this year. You're not seeing it until, you know, 2030, 2031. And they're not starting this year.
Are there statistics we can lean on for approximately how many do school-aged children come out of apartment buildings?
We, we don't collect that citywide. We, frankly, the way that we do it right now, we would like to improve this process as we sort of sample different developments on an ongoing basis. That might be something that we could look at doing, though. I, I don't know that there's a way to, where it gets challenging is smaller multifamily property owners that own three to four units in an area of the city. It's very tough to get that information from them. But certainly, we can understand the number of multifamily units. We do know that. We could get the sampling of the projects that we can get answers from, and we could get a sense of what that might look like. But getting a real accurate answer across the city would be very challenging.
I guess I'm, I, I had heard a statistic that it was for every 100, what was it? 100
Residents.
Residents, there's one school-aged child?
I can't disagree with that.
Yeah, that was that, that same kind of housing conversation that, that I was a part of, but I don't want to claim statistics that I can't cite.
Sure.
Because that's false news.
We'd be happy, we'd be happy to look at that a little more, and I can talk to superintendent about the source of that.
Ms. Darling?
So, I'm going to face this way so I can't see Madam Chairperson as I ask this.
I can still yell.
You guys know the question we're up against. Okay? Mount Pleasant has been all over.
Yeah, what? We have no idea.
What?
No, really?
What's this?
We are the best-kept secret, apparently. We're all here for the same reason, where we're trying to get all of the facts together. I feel like we've heard the same facts time and time again. But what I want to hear right now, instead, is from the four individuals here that are not BOE members, since BOE members cannot answer this question at the moment. Close or no close, yes or no? What would your vote be? Based on all of the information you have presented to us today, what would you guys do with our 19 facilities?
I don't think that's a fair question to ask them.
We don't see you.
It's, it's
I know. See you.
It's not our place.
It's, it's not our place, but I'll, I'll take the plunge first here.
I really appreciate you.
Well, just to be clear, when we discussed having this conversation, I, I kind of said that we would not put you on the spot about this.
No.
Because it's not your decision to make. We just wanted
I can't speak for the board.
But we just wanted the, the numbers, like, the goal of the agenda was the numbers, the information for us to then come up with a decision.
But this is how I'm understanding the
It's fine.
Because let's face it, most of this I don't understand.
It's, it's not our place to, to answer such a, such a question. It's our job to help you.
Right.
So, given the numbers.
I have a question.
Where do the numbers point?
I'd like to issue a, a response quickly. I cannot speak to the situation in Mount Pleasant. What I can speak to is that if enrollment continues to decline at the rate that it is going, you will clearly have decisions to make about the current facilities that you have and the ongoing fixed costs of operating those facilities, and whether or not that's sustainable within the context of the operating budget and the capital plan. Whether that's Mount Pleasant, modifications to existing facilities, closure, changes, I, I can't answer that question. What I do know, based on what I've seen in the study, at least it was done some time ago, is that there are concerns about being able to sustain, sustain all the facilities. And I think those concerns appear to be legitimate based on the enrollment. Beyond that, the decision at hand, it's, it's impossible for me, at least, to answer and weigh in on.
Sir, can I please commend you on that answer? It was thought out, well-done. Like, most people give me the politician's answer or the "it's not my place to say," and I just, I really appreciate the fact that you just gave a very factual answer and about the hard decision that needs to be made.
But it is certainly not our place to say, and so Director Cummings is absolutely correct that we cannot answer the question as to what facility, how that's done, or, or if the closure or modifications need to happen at all. But there are concerns in the data. That's all I can really say at this time.
Thank you for your honesty.
I'm going to follow on by saying, and this is what I wanted to close my, my sentiments with a few, few moments ago, is rhetorically, what work have you done yet to develop your guiding principles for your future planning? And what we can do is work with you to tease out and, and ultimately, hopefully gain some consensus as to what your guiding principles are, what your goals are, over the next X amount of years, based off of the data that Director Sullivan just talked about, and based on your priorities as the elected policymaker for the community. And we are here to help you do that. You can then set those plans into place, and that will be good guidance for your people who implement the policy, which is something like the superintendent or, or someone like myself. And so, my question to you, and you don't need to answer this tonight, is what, what work have you done to start towards the path of developing this design guidance?
I would like to follow up on that as well. Just to say that we are here to help guide everybody with this decision. It is not something to be taken lightly, as the budget is not something to be taken lightly, and the tax increase is not to be taken lightly. We, as a community, need to work together to be fiscally responsible, and that's why we, we're here. We want to help with this process.
I, I appreciate that. Ms. Lamphier, and then Ms. Raymond, and then Ms. Daniels-Williams.
I just wanted to say that, you know, we're sitting here in this beautiful school that we built, and it's, it's wonderful, but it also is kind of tone-deaf to be discussing Mount Pleasant here, because this is the place that we decided to invest money. And Mount Pleasant, for decades, school board after school board, year after year, nobody invested in it. And nobody's going to invest in our inner city until we make the decision to do that. And us saying, now, not specific to Mount Pleasant, but us saying, "Well, no one's invested in that. No one's invested in that. It's too much work. We can't do it." Then no one's ever going to make our inner-city area a place where people really want to be, a place that attracts families and, and stuff like that. So, I just, I just think it's important to remember that Nashua is made up of many different kinds of people, many different incomes. And I, I think it's important for us to show that we care about the kids out here in the suburb-type area, but also, we care just as much about the kids in the downtown area. So.
Alderman, down.
Just to reflect on Mount Pleasant, there has been some work done over the years. And, as again, I've been involved with the schools for over 24 years. And the way anything happens relative to school construction is, the Board of Education has to decide to do something and put that, if it's over a million dollars, put it forth to the Joint Special School Building Committee to then go, either approve or not approve, and then it goes forward for funding to the Board of Aldermen. I don't recall ever having a request from any Board of Education in the last 24 years to renovate Mount Pleasant. Nope, Mr. Smith agrees. So, if, if something hasn't been done, it starts with the Board of Education, not anyone else.
Hold on, we have a, a line going. So it was Ms. Raymond, then Ms. Daniels-Williams, and then Dr. Andre actually has some, not like actually, I didn't mean it that way, but Dr. Andre would like to
So I just, I just wanted to touch on the, the JSSBC process, but that's not really where my question was. So, you know, Mr. Smith and others who are in charge of our facilities have brought consistently to the Board and the JSSBC when there are projects that need to be done. He does it annually, and he does it more often than that. And so, priorities for, for renovations have been for things like windows falling out of buildings and, you know, roofs that leak. And, you know, I, I think a lot of the work that we've done has been about fixing the places that were posing health or safety issues for students. And I'm going to include Elm Street in that, because when we looked at Elm Street to fix the, the health and safety issues, it was astronomically expensive. But my question for future planning is actually for the, the city people, and that's about what happens now. So, for example, Elm Street, we've known for some time that it would be closing and kids would be moving to the three renovated and new middle schools. So what happens if the district decides that we don't want to use a facility or we want to repurpose a facility? Say we wanted to, I don't know, hypothetically, move Central Office into one of the other buildings, right? And cut costs by not having Central Office have its own. I'm pulling this out of thin air. There's no plan for that. Nobody thinks that that's what we're doing. It's just a hypothetical.
That's how it comes true.
I know. People are going to be like, "She's, she's pulling new stuff out." But like hypothetically, if we, if we repurposed some of our buildings and the city, so Nashua is unique in the state, other districts own their properties, right? But we're part of the city, so as a board, we don't own anything. It goes to you guys. So what happens then? So what's, what's going to happen with Elm Street when it's not our responsibility? And what would happen to any other building that we didn't use anymore? Like, and would that help the taxpayers in any way?
If, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes. Sorry.
So, I'm going to answer your question in a very legalese-type way.
Right. I just want like the process, because I don't really understand.
Right, and that's what I'm going to tell you. But I think your conversation is worth a deeper answer than what I'm about to give. So technically speaking, in the city of Nashua, and I'm going to take a moment to make an editorial comment, I'm hearing a lot of city, school
Like, we're all the same.
Us, them, we're the same community, we're the same entity from a legal standpoint. You're a municipal corporation. And so these assets are all one, of one legal entity. It's the municipal corporation, which the Board of Education is part of that. And you are, through the charter, vested with the responsibility of the control and custody, and essentially the care of this asset, until you elect to make a decision where you want to stop having an educational function at that facility, at that asset, and then it gets turned back to the general government. So with the Elm Street Middle School, you, you either have or you're going to take an affirmative vote, and that vote is going to basically say that you've ceased your needs from an educational perspective to occur, and that it will then be turned back to administrative services, the general government of the, of the city.
Right.
And that's for all of your assets.
No. No?
We're, we're going to officially make that motion and vote on Monday.
Oh, okay.
So.
Preview, Monday.
Yep, exactly. And so then, once that occurs, and our recommendation is make it date-specific, it then would be officially back in the general government's purview. And, and all, it doesn't really change all that much, other than, you know, it's going to be a different group of people who will be maintaining it, different budget that would be paying for the utilities, you know, differing items like that. We just went through this with the Nine Riverside building, where DPW office building was, and it got transferred actually from, directly from the DPW's care and control and custody directly to the police department.
Oh, okay.
And, and, and all the various assets here in the city kind of operate in the same venue. So I just gave you a very legal, technical answer, but I do think it's worth a conversation for this body to talk about how certain assets can be used or should be used that has an educational focus to it, and have and explore that conversation. And, and that will help, I think, the community and the city overall.
Right. I mean, so, so basically, the, from a, from a money taxpayer perspective, they're all city buildings. It's just who's making the decisions about them, shifts from the Board of Ed to then the Board of Aldermen to whoever else.
Correct.
Okay. So for cost savings, it doesn't really save a lot theoretically, because you still have to keep the building from like pipes freezing and stuff?
So for the Elm Street Middle School, as an example
Right.
Yes, but we are, we have a plan in place, and we've been working on this for the last two years, in anticipation of this happening. We are in pretty good stead to redevelop that property. So that's a nine acres of land with approximately 200,000 square foot improvement on it. That's the, that's the middle school itself. And we know through studying that land what could potentially be built there. And so, we, we actually have an RFP written to be released any day now, where we will be seeking redevelopment of that nine acres. That's a major investment in the downtown core, that we anticipate some level of mid-rise type housing to occur. I say some level, meaning how many units. We're not really sure yet. We are looking to preserve the Keith Auditorium, and we are looking to utilize that land in its highest and best use, which will eventually generate tax dollars that it's otherwise not generating right now. And that is not a cost on to the city. That's, that's actually in, in addition to the city.
So, just a follow-up. It almost, to me, feels like these types of conversations with city developers and should be happening as well at the JSSBC, because I feel like sometimes we're operating in a silo without a bigger picture. Or maybe we need a meeting just for that.
I definitely feel like there needs to be more conversations about planning, and I think that that goes right back to the beginning of this meeting, where we were talking about how do we stay on top of these things.
Right.
And then what Director Cummings said about, you know, what is our guiding principle and what do we plan on doing and what are we moving towards? I, I have a question, but it's too convoluted right now, so I'll hold off. And Ms. Darling's
I'll be good this time, I swear.
Are you done, Ms. Raymond? Sorry, I didn't mean to
Yeah, oh, yes, thank you. I just, I, I don't, well, I didn't, but now I have a vague idea of what the process is. Like, everyone keeps asking me what happens with Elm Street, and I'm like, "I don't know." Which is not a helpful answer. So now I can have something better, but still not a complete answer.
Ms. Darling?
So, my question is for Mr. Dowd, has nothing to do with Mount Pleasant. Okay? If Mr. Smith makes the list, and I would ask him if he were here at the microphone, and the Board doesn't have a this or that kind of say and the Board doesn't have a this or that kinda say when we're given the list of what repairs, we're just told, "Hey, this is what needs to be fixed, and what we wanna, what we think should be fixed in the five-year period." Doesn't that mean that it doesn't start with the BOE? It starts with Mr. Smith? And Mr. Smith, shouldn't we maybe be involved in more meetings about the this or that? And maybe as a board, start making some decisions?
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna do like a little personal objection here. I don't, I really don't think it's appropriate to call out individual district staff.
We actually have a policy that says we're here.
Right, like, it just is wrong. One. Two, no, finance and ops, the entire point of that and our Board is that the district brings us things, and then we discuss and vote on them. But I just wanna go back to, we have a policy, and also it's just bad process to call out individual members, individual employees at a public meeting. It's just, I'm sure it's against...
We can only yell at Dr. Andre.
A law.
So then, Dr. Andre, should you maybe make it so that the list of the this or that can be determined by the BOE at some point?
So with all due respect...
'Cause it wasn't part of budget.
So with all due respect, it's presented to you to vote upon, so...
But then when we ask questions, we were told we did not have the time for questions. We were told that it needed to be the Alderman next week.
So we can discuss further, but it, it comes as a recommendation, as I would present a recommendation.
And again, it was Tuesday.
Yeah, just to, we did get a presentation on Tuesday about the capital improvement plan, and I would encourage anyone in the audience who's interested in this, it was pretty extensive. So if you check out our finance and operation agenda online tomorrow or something, you can see the whole plan laid out for the city. Everything is set up by what year they think it might be able to be done, and what priority it is to the city. So it was really, it was really interesting.
But, 'cause from what I have seen so far that I've been able to find, I didn't see a list of things that like, "Hey, we're gonna just ignore this for these next five years because we have these things that we need to deal with." There was no this, that.
Oh, but, I mean, well, now we have...
That I could find.
Now, we have a plan, and it's listed on there, what, like, the Birch Street in Main Dunstable.
So then we willingly made the choice in those to forego anything with Mount Pleasant in each of those?
Yeah, Mount Pleasant was on the list, too.
But I mean, from what I'm hearing, it's been the, "We're ignoring Mount Pleasant, we're ignoring Mount Pleasant, we're ignoring Mount Pleasant," not giving them all the updates that they need. And yet, I know in the three years I've been on the Board, and I was going through most of my day today, different agendas from the last three years, and I was not able to find any time at a full Board meeting where Mount Pleasant was brought up, and it was said, "Hey, Mount Pleasant needs this, but we're going to forego this to do this." And that's what I'm looking at, is that...
So Alderman-Dowd has a response for you.
I think I can clarify a couple things. One is that as part of the capital improvements program, which was presented to Finance and the Board of Education, 350,000 of the 1.3 million was for a study for the 20 buildings that the Board of Education has under their control. It, it was not included in the capital improvements program this year, but I have advised the mayor at the end of the year funding to fund that, to give, so you can do an engineering analysis of all 20 buildings and what needs to be done to them going forward, immediately or downstream, even this building, because you have to plan ahead. So that study would give us a very good understanding of what needs to be done to what building and when. We just did that with the fire department. They've just started that for their six stations. Obviously, it was a lot less money, but you got 20 buildings, and it's, okay. What does the engineering analysis say that you need to do for maintenance and upkeep and/or potential replacement of 20 buildings? So any final decision should probably wait till that is done. I'm hoping we can get it funded soon, and it will get started. I have, we don't know how long it would take, 'cause I think we're just doing proposals, so... But that will give you an engineering analysis, not a hypothetical or a personal analysis of what needs to be done. But I can tell you, in my number of years working with Mr. Smith, he does an outstanding job of planning maintenance for all of your buildings.
I'm sure he does. I'm just saying that we can't say that Mount Pleasant hasn't been touched in 20 years if it has, and we can't say that the BOE is the bottom of it if it's hot.
Mount Pleasant has been touched. There have been things done to Mount Pleasant. When he gives you an analysis of all the projects we've done, he'll explain what's been done to Mount Pleasant. It wasn't just ignored.
I was more or less referencing what you had said, if Mount Pleasant hadn't been touched, that the BOE was the bottom line. It was your hypothetical I was going off of, I apologize. But thank you.
It would come from the Board of Ed.
So again, I think this is, this conversation is part of the larger conversation about how do we become more involved in the planning and the implementation of changes that Ms. Lamphier brought up at the beginning of the meeting, that I think we can tackle within our own district, but also, once we come up with a plan, also including in the city. I think we are all on the same page with having more conversations about how to make sure that there is equity amongst the deferred maintenance within the district. And I think Alderman-Dowd really fought for us during the budget hearing to get us that extra $500,000, and the nine, what is it, 914, 9 million that we're aiming to have in deferred maintenance for the schools over the next 10 years? So I think, five years? So I think the goal to make sure that we're staying on top of projects and not just band-aiding broken projects is, has been a shift in our city, especially in the last couple of months. I think that it's, we're all walking in that same direction. It's just coming up with the details of it. And the details, we'll let the, I'm gonna let him do it. Okay?
Ms. Bishop, I think, I think I could be wrong, but I think that the Turner is working on the air conditioning. I think they're gonna shut it down at 9 o'clock. If you wanna do a tour, I wouldn't go too much longer with the meeting.
Yeah, we were, we were gonna try to heat people up if we were talking too much, right? That was the plan. Okay. I, my Fitbit died on me earlier, so I actually have no idea what time it is, and my phone keeps ringing at me for timers, but I don't know what it says. But I see Ms. Daniels-Williams had something, Director Cummings had, oh, you just, were just high-fiving across the way. And Dr. Andre, did you have anything?
Sure.
Okay. So Ms. Daniels-Williams, and then Dr. Andre.
So, like, there was so much said here today. I am glad that you said that we will go back to it. I just wanna make sure that we actually do. Being a new Board member, I don't know what has always happened in the past. I've watched as many footage as I possibly can. I have sat here and made decisions, but all I can say is that it hasn't came before us.
What hasn't?
About the Mount Pleasant thing. Recent.
Deferred maintenance or the school building itself?
So when we said that we were gonna talk about it, that it had been put aside until a later date, that's what we said. We said that we would do a strategic plan...
Building open, keeping the, like, the redistricting or the actual building maintenance?
Just creating a strategic plan to figure out what we wanted to do. We haven't done that, and that's where we started and left off, and then we set this meeting and everything. So what I, I just wanna say is that I wanna, I wanna be effective. I, this is my, my first term. I've studied a lot about what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to protect the interest. We only get what comes to us, and if everyone on the Board is saying that they haven't got it, we do get the 50-year plan every time, but it changes every single year, because I've looked back, the 50-year, it changes position. We...
Yeah, it goes up as projects get done.
So, so my whole, my whole thing is, we have a responsibility to the children. We have to be children-focused. I feel like this presentation today was very informative. I'm so thankful to the city staff for coming and putting it up, but there's things about that that we can change, too. You know, like, if, if we want to have more children, then we can do more about that. I wanna make sure that we don't lose that. I wanna also just say, I'm just very thankful that we actually got to have this meeting today. I wish that it, we could have went to the community that we are actually talking about in shadow today. Like, this is all about whether we should keep the schools open or close them, and why we should or shouldn't. So that's an important thing that we should be discussing, and I'm thankful that we got that information today. We got the statistics, we got the work up, and it'll be available to the public, because that's what they've been asking for. So thank you.
Yeah. I, I think government probably moves about as fast as molasses, is how it goes. So getting...
Uphill.
Uphill. Getting to the point where we had this much information presented to us in regards to statistics and monies. It was a lot of different, a lot of different pieces coming together with the information that they've been collecting for the last several months. And we definitely have all been eagerly excited about having this conversation, and I'm glad that we took our time with it, so that we had the most comprehensive amount of information, and we had all of the team players at the table, so that when it comes time to make this decision, we were not, you know, at the 10-yard line going, "Oh, shoot, we didn't ask this person about this." So at this point, I think the majority of the people that we need at the table for us to best understand what, what the responsibilities are of not just us, but what the city needs to do with the finite amount of money. I think now we have a deeper understanding of, of what the priorities are, but I think we're also hearing that the city is dedicated to helping us build our school district in the way that matches the growth of the district. So I'm, that was my goal of this meeting. We can come back, and when we're talking about Mount Pleasant specifically, we all have the same information, and we have the same information from the city coming back to us, and we have all of the input that we need. We now know the players, so if you have follow-up questions, they're right here. And then we can just continue having this conversation until it comes time, like, we're not gonna create more information and push this out even more, but...
I'm very thankful, because they said that it was up to us, that they would lead us and guide us, give this, this information, and then turn it back to us for the 19 buildings. So it is still up to the Board until we turn it back over to the city, like we did Elm Street, or are gonna do on Monday. So we're stewards over that, and we've been entrusted. So that's, that's all I'm saying, and I am thankful and taking it positively.
Yeah. I think we all, I don't think there's any one of us who can say that we have not overturned a rock yet. So I appreciate this conversation and your engagement tonight, and getting prepared for this meeting and coming ready. And I keep, this is what happens when my back is to you, is I forget that you exist, and I forget to hand, forget to hand the floor over. So I'm gonna let Dr. Andre from the back of my head speak now. I apologize.
No, no worries. I was just gonna reinforce what was said a lot already. Just again, this is a start of the conversation. We are one city, one district, moving in collaborative efforts. And I think it was Ms. Enright or Mr. Cummings who said, you know, going back to our values, right? And was this, like, as the city's going through their comprehensive plan, their strategic plan, as we start our strategic plan, how are they comprehensive? If they're the investment of certain areas of town, what's the impact on schools? So I think things go hand in hand. As we're stewards of the, of the district, our plans can't be in conflict with the city's plans either. So I think, you know, we need to be working in conjunction. And, you know, in all my conversations, you know, with the city, and, you know, even through the ad hoc committee, I think everyone is committed to invest in, you know, the Mount Pleasant area. I think what we need to be open to is, like, based on the data, what does that investment look like? Is it in the existing building? Is it in new buildings? Does it look different? So I think when we have time, you know, and that hasn't been the conversation in two years. It's only been about the building. And what we heard in meeting after meeting, it's not about the building per se, it's about the people. And what do the people need? And so, could the school look different? So, and I think we haven't approached that conversation particularly and clearly, but, you know, in my, again, with my conversations with the city, we need to invest in that city of, like, part of town. And it might just look differently. But there is a commitment to the people, in the students in that area, and how do you recruit and go there? So I think this pause gives us opportunities to rethink. And then that goes to the city's comprehensive plan, and what does Nashua look like in 2040? And what's a reasonable investment with the money that we have? So I think going a little slow and not, like, having kinda conversations was an unintended benefit of things just taking longer, so that, you know, solidifying our data, looking at the comprehensive plan, having the ad hoc, ad hoc committee, we just have better information. But I think at the end of the day, we are all committed to our students in the district, and we're committed to the city. And so how do we, again, embrace this conversation as a start, and then move forward on a comprehensive plan strategically of what that might look like? And it might take five to eight years to get to that point, if there's a new investment, and how do we fund that? So I think, again, that's collaborative.
Any other comments or questions? So I promised no votes tonight, but we do have one. And that's a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I think Ms. Daniels-Williams seconded it. I made the motion.
Oh.
Ms. Daniels-Williams seconded.
Oh.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and the air conditioning is going off.